Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 16th, 2016 Chino City Council Meeting. Please rise and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, have a seat. First item under Ceremonials, Presentation is the recognition of the Chino Youth Boxing Foundation Award recipients. Some of the board members are here this evening. Why don't you come up to the front here and we'll be calling up the recipients. First, we'd like to call up the sportsmanship award winner, Isaac Martinez. Isaac? Most Improved, Albert Salgado Castro. Congratulations, Albert. And boxer of the year, David Quintana Jr. David? We have a list of the 2015 Boxers of the Month. I'd like to, there's only two here today in attendance, and the first one would be Ludwig Bin-Gat-Ganzza. Ludwig, you're here, come on up. What month are you?
July.
July? Congratulations. And Andrew Saldado Sandoval, so I'm sorry, Sandoval. What month were you, Andrew? You remember? Okay. The rest of the recipients are Daniel Cruz, Miguel Sandoval, David Quintana Jr., Rudy Flores, Nathan Garcia, Daniel Martinez, Lenore Garcia, Isaac Martinez, Aiden Zavala, and Albert Salgado Castro. So they were the other months recipients. You might give, who would like to give a little presentation on the...
Presidente.
El Presidente. Vamonos. No. Where'd my girl go? She left me. Is she coming back?
I need everybody.
Why don't you introduce your board members?
I'm the new president for the board for this year. Yolanda Alguín is the vice president. Jimmy Espinosa is the secretary and the treasurer. She couldn't make it tonight. So we have the lady that's been with this club for about, what, 40 years? Michael Haji. And the rest of the board that were introduced. But first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor and the City Council, to give us this opportunity to show these guys that they're working hard all year round and they really deserve the award that they got because they really earned it. I want to thank the city of Chino. It's been very big help for me and tried to get this program rolling the best ways we And everything is going great. Also, we have a big...
Here it is, the boys did very well this year.
They did, they sure did. And also, we have an event that's coming up in April 23rd, which is the Saturday Night Fight.
Oh, okay.
That we do, excuse me, that we do every year. So I just want everybody to know that any help they can offer, we appreciate it.
That'd be great. Well, past the City Council myself, I want to help or congratulate your board members for giving up your time and energy.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
You guys are doing a great job. Let's give a round of applause for all of you. Good job. Next presentation is recognition of Armed Forces Banner Program participant. Since 2007, the city of Chino has honored over 330 soldiers throughout the Armed Forces Banner Program. These banners hang proudly throughout our community and serve as a reminder of each soldier's service to our country. Tonight, we recognize one local hero and present him with his banner that has been flying in the city. I'd like to call up Arturo Jimenez and his family. Come on up. Congratulations. Hi. You ever shake the hand of a mayor before? Your mom and dad? All right, nice to meet you. Let me read a little bit about Arturo. He was born in Valenda, California. Arturo Jimenez Jr. moved to Chino in July of 2000 and joined the Navy in September of 2000. He achieved the rank of E-4. He was stationed on the USS John Stennis in San Diego and also with the assault craft Unified at Camp Pendleton. During his tour of duty, he was deployed to the Arabian Sea during Operation Enduring Freedom. Arturo was awarded the following medals: Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, National Defense Service Medal, Navy Unit Commendation Good Conduct Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Pistol Marksmanship Ribbon, and the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal. So that's pretty good. Arturo has an 11-year-old daughter, Raquel. He currently works at the Navy Exchange, oh, in command here in Chino?
Yes.
Oh, cool. He graduated from TAFE College with a degree in Business Administration and Liberal Arts Degree. It's a great pleasure that we honor Arturo for his duty to our country. Have a certificate for Arturo, and it reads "An Honor and Recognition of Your Dedication and Commitment to Our Nation." I'd like to present that to you. And here's your banner that's been flying. So we'd like to present that to you. If you'd like to say a few words, why don't you have your wife over there. Why don't you introduce your family first?
Well, this is my girlfriend, Marcy, daughter, Eileen, my parents, Rose and Art. I just want to say that I'm glad that I served. This country's a wonderful country. It's definitely worth fighting for, and if I could, I would do it again.
We appreciate your service to our country. Be proud of it. Very good. Congratulations. She's not too good looking. It's amazing, these men and women, because there's no draft anymore, that they volunteer to serve our country. Says a lot. Next presentation is the Mayor's Home Beautification Award for February. The winner of this month is David and Kristen Watson here in Chino, but unfortunately, the winners weren't able to join us today. We want to thank them for keeping Chino beautiful and their contribution to their home, and you'll see it, you'll hear on the monitors. We'll make sure that they get all the goodies that go with it. Next is Public Communications. I've got a request from Pastor Sheldon Boyd of the Cornerstone Community Church to lead us in the invocation. Those of you who would like to participate, please rise. Sheldon?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you once again for this opportunity tonight to be able to bring the leadership of our city before you. Lord, as we were just watching these different presentations made, it's a reminder to us, Lord, of the blessing that you have put upon this city. We're so thankful, Father, for the great things that make this city such a wonderful place to live. Father, I ask that you would just guide and direct in this meeting tonight. Lord, you know the decisions that need to be made that keep us moving forward. I pray, Father, that you would grant wisdom to our City Council to be able to make those decisions. I pray, Father, that you will continue to keep those safe who serve us, our police and fire departments watch over and protect them. Give us a great night in service to you, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheldon. Have a seat, folks. Under Public Communication, I have two requests to speak. Is the supervisor here yet? Let's see him. First is Belinda Douglas from the Chino Valley Chamber.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Belinda Douglas, and I represent the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I came to give you some updates. Tomorrow morning, we're going to have our business at breakfast, and our guest speaker will be Suzanne Burt, and her discussion is going to be on pain relief. So if you're in pain or you have aches and pains, come to the chamber and get some education on how you can eliminate that pain. I didn't, I wasn't looking at director.
Yeah, you were looking at that.
On February 22nd, we have the Chamber Board of Directors Strategic Planning Meeting. On February 24th, we have a business mixer that will be open to all businesses. It's going to be at Golden Empire Mortgage located on Central Avenue. On February 25th, we're going to have our Pizza and Politics, our Government Affairs Meeting at the Carolyn Owens Community Center. Everyone is welcome in the community. Our guest speaker is Wayne Taylor. He's a retired scientist and university professor. He's going to be talking about the elimination of fossil fuels and where the future will take us with synthetic fuels and what the mandates and government requirements are going to be as we transition out of fossil fuels. On March 2nd, we have Salute to Public Safety, so we can honor all of our emergency responders. Our Master of Ceremonies is going to be Kurt Hagman, and our County Police Chief Gerard Burguan will be the keynote speaker. And that's the update from the chamber. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. I don't have any other requests to speak, but we do have some students here in attendance, probably for some assignment from their teacher. We'd like you to come up to the podium, give us your name, your school, your name of your class, and who your teacher is.
Volunteer right away.
I'm Savannah Calgiano from Don Lugo High School, and we're doing it for US government Sade's class.
Who's your teacher?
Sade. Mr. Sade.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm Jillian Y, and I also go to Don Lugo in the same class as her, and I have Mr. Sade, too.
Thank you.
I'm Isabel Ramos, and I as well go attend Don Tonya Lugo High School in Mr. Sade's class.
Nice to have you. That's all? Seeing none, we will close public communication. Next is Consent Call. Anybody wish to put online for discussion may do so now. If not, we will entertain a motion to approve. It's moved by Mayor Pro Temulua, seconded by Councilman Howie. Please vote. Passes four yes with one absent, that being Councilman Elrod. Next is New Business Joint City and Successor Agency to the Chino Redevelopment Agency. Item 14, Award of Contract Banking Services. Award of Contract to Citizens Bank for City and Successor Agency Services. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, public, tonight on this matter, we have a conflict of interest in that three members of the City Council, including Councilman Elrod, who's not here tonight, have stocks in the Citizens Business Bank. So normally, they would be required to recuse themselves and not vote. But in this case, because three have conflicts, we have to invoke what's called the Rule of Necessity, which is a way to get a third vote on the council. And the way we do that is by lot of the two council members here, Councilwoman Yaloa and Councilmember Duncan, to draw lots so that one of them can qualify as a third vote and then vote on the matter. If that procedure's invoked, then the person so selected can vote, notwithstanding the conflict of interest. And so that's what we're going to do here tonight. Our city clerk has devised a very fine way to deal with this issue. She has slips of paper with some numbers on them and no coin, and the two council members are going to select the number, and she has a predetermined number that determines who would be the person on the council to vote. So she's handing them out now, and that's the second one, the drum roll, and you open the envelopes. The one with the number with a circle around it is the council member who gets to vote, and that's Councilmember Duncan.
That's Councilmember...
So under the Rule of Necessity, Councilmember Duncan will vote, and Councilwoman Yaloa is conflicted and recused and must leave and not participate in the discussion, so the matter can go forward. Mayor?
Thank you, Jimmy. Our staff report on this side of this evening is by Rob Burns, our Director of Finance. Mr. Burns?
Good evening, Mayor and remaining members of the City Council. This evening, we are asking that you award a contract between Citizens Business Bank and the City and Successor Agency. Citizens Business Bank has met the City and Successor Agency's expectations over the course of the last three years. Citizens Business Bank continues to offer strength and stability as a banking institution. In fact, on January 7th of this year's, Forbes Magazine released its list of top 100 publicly traded banks and thrifts, and Citizens was rated number one. Staff recommends Citizens Business Bank be selected to provide banking services for the city of Chino and the successor agency for an additional three years based on, first, the competitive bidding process of the city of commerce, second, the strength and stability of Citizens Business Bank, third, the quality customer service that we've received from Citizens Business Bank during the last three years. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Prior to council questions or comments, I'll open this for public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Nobody's mad at Citizens Bank? We'll close public comment. Entertain a mo, any questions or comments by the council members that would entertain a motion? It's moved by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Howie. Please vote. Three yes, we have one abstention and one absent. Item 15, Establishment Residential Parking Permit Area on Guardian Way between Vernon Avenue and Benson Avenue. Our staff report this evening is by our Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director, Mr. Jose Alair. Mr. Alair?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. Currently, there is an 84-unit residential development under construction on the northwest corner of Benson and Guardian Way. Guardian Way is just south of the 60 Freeway in Chino and goes from Benson West over to 10th Street and serves access to our new Chino Police Department as well as Walnut Elementary School. As part of this project's review by the city, the Chino Police Department has requested that the north side of Guardian Way along the project frontage be, become a residential parking district. The police department is concerned that by allowing parents to park on that side, it will encourage mid-block crossings by parents going to pick up and drop off the students from Walnut Elementary, which is immediately south of this area. So in accordance with Chino Municipal Code Chapter 10.29, a survey was prepared by the city engineer that made findings relative to establishing the residential parking district in this area. The developer is the current owner of all the properties along the north side of Guardian Way, and they are in favor of this district. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2016-014, approving the survey, and requesting that we schedule a public hearing for March 15th, 2016. That concludes my report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Alair. Prior to council comments or questions, I'll open this for public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any questions or comments by council? I would entertain a motion. It's moved by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilmember Howie. Please vote. Item passes yes with one absent. Thank you, Mr. Alair. Under Mayor and Council reports, under Mayor's report, first I'd like everyone to know that a full closure of eastbound and westbound 91 freeways between the 71 and I-15 will occur Friday, February 19th at 9:00 PM to Monday, February 22nd, 2016 at 4:00 AM. The 55-hour weekend closure of the 91 will allow crews to consolidate three major construction activities and help ensure the safety of project crews and motorists by eliminating the possibility of conflicts. In case of rainstorm or inclement weather, the closure will be postponed to the next weekend, weather permitting. Because of the impact of the full closure, we have, will have on this a heavily traveled roadway. Motorists are urged to steer clear of the local freeways during this closure. The City Council and I are recommending you rediscover Chino this weekend and avoid traveling in the area, or stay home.
I'd be watching Carbon Canyon.
Yeah, yeah, well, Carbon Canyon would be a mess. Lastly, I wanted to give an early reminder that Darié 5KN Fun Run is scheduled for Saturday, March 5th, at the Yellow Park. All those who register before the 27th will receive a $5 discount, and for more information, you can visit thechino youth museum dot com. Okay, Mayor Pro Temulua?
Just a very quick report this evening, and that is, three of us got to tour the Walmart Distribution Center yesterday. It's Councilman Howie, Councilman Duncan, and myself. That's an amazing building. It's 1.2 million square feet.
It's got its own zip code.
Oh, my Lord. They only employ approximately 229 people right now, but they're adding, I think you said 20 a week? Yeah, and every couple of weeks, and they'll continue to do that as they expand. This building is absolutely gigantic, and he said they're only like maybe 2% stocked right now, so I can't even imagine what it's going to look like when it's full, but they have quite a corporate ethic in that particular business, and they seem to not lack for interest in people that want to work for them. Management's really, really nice, so that was very, very interesting. It was a good tour yesterday.
That is a e-commerce. Tell them what that is.
Oh, that's where if you want to order from Walmart online...
It will come out of Chino.
They ship directly out of that facility, and it's the only one on the west coast. So it serves, I think the gentleman said basically from Texas West, so the whole western part of the United States is served by that particular warehouse. It's amazing, absolutely amazing.
I heard they're showing interest. There's one identical building right next to it that they're thinking of probably acquiring too, because...
They apparently have a first write and refuse along that business.
Yeah, on that second building.
That would be bigger stuff. Would be shipped out of, currently shipped out of Moreno Valley.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
No report tonight.
Councilman Howie?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, in fact, that warehouse, it's unbelievable. It is so big that just in where they're going to stock all their merchandise, he said the top 20,000 items that you, they want to stock the top 20,000 items in the catalog. So if you're buying a belt or a shirt or anything at Walmart online, it is just the area where they stock. It goes up four stories, and if you walked each story, every aisle, you would walk 26.2 miles, a marathon, in that building.
Jeez, that'd be a marathon.
You could walk 26 miles within that building.
Hey, we could have this, we could hold a Chino marathon, make them run in the Walmart.
Just within the module.
Yeah, just, that's just part of the building. Yeah, part of the building, so it was pretty remarkable how they get the stuff in and they stock it and they get it, and they said if you call, if you go online and order by noon, they'll have it shipped that day. You could order four or five different items in that place, and they'll get it out within that day. Not yet, but eventually, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's going to take them a couple of years to fill that whole thing up, I think, as far as merchandise. It's pretty incredible. Anyway, I had a chance a couple of weeks ago to go by our Historical Society building, and as you know, it's been closed for the last few years from damage, the roof damage that they had a few years ago, and it looks like the old museum, Historical Society, is going to open, I believe, in May. That's the, it's really in good shape. The floor's done, they painted the inside, it looks really great. They've really spent a lot of time documenting all of Chino's history, and when it opens up, you're going to get a great chance to see a lot of Chino history in that building. It's going to be pretty, pretty good. I'm looking forward to that, and we can get the school kids back in for visiting and maybe a few service clubs to come in for a meeting or two, and I think, I think, once it opens and more people get to see it, they'll start, people will start donating more of their stuff to the museum and society, and it's going to be quite, quite a nice place to go to in our city, because as you know, that's the old school building from, I don't even know how far back that old schoolhouse building goes, but it's back early in the last century. On February the 6th, I attended the Russ Miller Run, and it was a perfect day. I mean, you know, it's a 5K run, and there, everybody was out, the weather was perfect. I think they had 939 runners participate, and it's all, it was, you're just a big mass of people, and then they go, and then everybody, they take off. So I was standing there talking to the mayor, and I turned around, and here comes the first runner back. It was 15 minutes, I was running, you know, three miles. Boom, one of the young kids won that race in 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Huh?
Yeah.
It was, you know, and then, you know, it takes about an hour to get everybody. I mean, I walked it once, took an hour. So, and 15 minutes to come flying back in, so that was, that was pretty good. So next year, I vow, I'm going to, I'm going to run in the Russ Miller next year, I'm going to train. I say that every year. And then, then the holidays come along, and I'm eating everything, and the training gets a little, and pretty soon, here it is, I can't run. But next year, next year, I'm going to go for it.
They had a gentleman there that was 82 years old.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
82 years old.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive. And then also, the fire district has six new firefighters. I went to, we went to the badge pinning, Mayor and I, and, you know, great young guys, and, you know, they're all fired up, and they showed the video, and the families were there, and it was, it was a nice vent for fire. And let's see what else. And then, of course, I attended a Chino Disalter Authority meeting on water. And that does it, that's it. Oh, boy.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the fire, the firemen. My wife had an accident last Friday, and they responded, and those guys are really good. In fact, I think the one young man that was doing the medical part of it was one of the cadets that they pinned. Yeah, and while they were working on my wife, and my wife wanted to relay to the fire department to thank you guys for the flowers. That was very kind of you, and she said to make sure I tell you thank you. So if you pass that on, I appreciate it. City Manager, anything to report?
I have no report, Mayor.
City Attorney, Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, we do have something to report. Arturo Fierro, the Assistant City Attorney, is going to give you a report on a recent victory we had in court pertaining to a very important element of the city's general plan. He handled a case from start to finish. Arturo, you want to come forward and give us a report on that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. Here to give you a short report on the case of Creed 21 versus City of Chino. This lawsuit involved the Climate Action Plan, which as you know, the City Council approved about three years ago, well, about two years ago. The staff began working on the Climate Action Plan almost three years ago, and the point of it was that we needed to comply with state law regarding greenhouse gas emissions, and one of the ways to do this was to create a Climate Action Plan which makes it possible to determine whether projects that come to the city for approval meet the requirements of greenhouse gas emissions, and the point is to reduce emissions so that by 2020, greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Chino will be 15% lower than they were in 2008. So instead of going up, we're going down, and this Climate Action Plan goes a long way towards making sure that we meet those targets. Now, because there's a city, and there's a law firm that's been challenging a lot of the projects that go through the city the last few years, we needed to make sure that this Climate Action Plan was as strong and defensible as possible. So as part of the process, the city staff with a consultant put together an environmental impact report, an EIR, that supported the conclusions and the assumptions that were part of the Climate Action Plan. And that EIR was based largely on the work that was done at the county level, at the regional level, through Sandbag, the San Bernardino Association of Governments, that also went through the same process. They did a Climate Action Plan, they did an EIR, and they worked up the inventories on greenhouse gas emissions that the city staff then and our consultant used to prepare our own documents. So it was very thorough, very carefully done, and very well done, I believe. Now, this law firm that I mentioned challenged the city, the approval of the Climate Action Plan, and we went to court...
That's not a law firm. Creed is not a law firm, is it?
Creed, no. Creed is the client. Creed is the client. Creed twenty-one was a client represented by the same law firm, the Briggs Law Firm, that was handling the case for them. So like I said, the Climate Action Plan, some of the elements are that it makes it possible and imposes some requirements, such as green building standards that will be applied to all new developments in the city, efficient, water-efficient landscaping that will be required throughout the city, adopting a master bicycle plan, a pedestrian plan for future use, and encouraging greater use of public transportation. Those are all part of the elements that were in the Climate Action Plan. The law firm filed a petition, like I said, seeking a writ of mandate ordering the city, that the city action, approving the Climate Action Plan, was not in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, which we call CEQA, or the city's own municipal code. One of the arguments was that the Climate Action Plan did not include a timeline for implementation. In other words, that there was no requirement that things be done by certain dates. Another argument was that there were no reduction targets for greenhouse gas emissions beyond 2020. And there were several others, but those are just a couple of examples. Now, Judge Don Alvarez reviewed the briefs that were submitted by both sides, and he issued his ruling, which was, I think, almost thirty pages by the time he was done. He was very, he very carefully discussed each of the arguments that were set forth by the Briggs Law Firm on behalf of Creed twenty-one, and he rejected every single argument. Yes. For example, he found that Creed did not show that there was no timeline for implementation in the record that came before the City Council. He also found that the law firm of Creed twenty-one did not show that there was no requirement to go beyond 2020, the 2020 date. And that was very clearly, clear under the law that because the general plan and the Climate Action Plan go through 2020, that was all we were required to do under state law, where there was no requirement that we go beyond the 2020 deadline. And the judge was very clear about that. He found that both the Climate Action Plan and the EIR that supported it were done correctly and according to law, and in compliance with all the recent state laws such as SB three seventy-five and AB thirty-two. In other words, the city was right. We did things correctly, we did things thoroughly, we did things right. That's really what I wanted to tell the council and the mayor tonight. The city staff did a terrific job, together with their consultants, as we did. The EIR was done right, the Climate Action Plan is thorough. It provides a planning document that can be used for many years, and will make sure that greenhouse gas emissions are reduced in the city for the next six or seven years, at least to 2020. And of course, at that time, we'll come back and revisit it and make changes as necessary. Mayor and council, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, when I got the email from you, I gave you congratulations, Arturo, and the staff. You guys did a great job.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see, oh, there's Karen. Any reports? No? What about the fire chief? Where's he? No? Oh, there he is. Oh, no, that's not you. None of report. Okay, thank you. Okay. That winds it up. We will adjourn. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be held on Tuesday, March first, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M. Close session at six P.M., if necessary. Good night and drive safely.